I'd like to call to order the Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for Monday, July 21st, 2025, and the first committee is Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to call the Finance Committee to order, and the first item is the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Ms. Carver.
Good evening, City Council Mayor.
Good evening.
The first thing on the agenda is our 2023 Paper Report. I am asking today for three things that should accept our outline paper report. The second thing is to announce our public comment period, and the third is a call for public hearing for the next city council meeting in August 11th.
All this on item number one?
Item number one.
All of those.
All of those. So we need to call for a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing will be a separate resolution, and then the comment period and acceptance of the report can be done by one resolution. But it will mention the public hearings as well, but the public hearing will be a solely standalone resolution. The other three items will be the other resolution.
So may I have a motion to call for a public hearing? Item number one.
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to accept the annual performance evaluation report?
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, the 2025-2026 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development allocation. Ms. Carver.
Yes, attached please, part of our 2025-2026 allocations. I'm asking the City Council to adopt the resolution about the ways us to accept our funding from HUD.
Question is?
Ms. Carver, just my, for the public's sake, as well, through summary of what...
Sure. This year, for community development locknet, also known as CDVG, we received $2,050,241. For HO, which is Home Investment Partnership Program, we received $1,187,963. And for Emergency Solution Grant, also known as ESJ, we received $184,656.
Go ahead. Yeah, Ms. Carver.
Ms. Carver, how do these figures compare to what we've gotten in the past?
It is roughly about four hundred and some odd dollars different from last year.
Okay.
So we get less.
That's not so bad. I was a little concerned about it, so...
So, yeah, there were no, we didn't, we weren't impacted by any major cuts.
Okay.
But this is kind of money that's in the pipeline. These dynamics in Washington are such that we're really looking at the next cycle seeing a significant hit in terms of the fundings provided through these grants and programs.
No, that was my question. Any other question that come in? Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept this item?
Awesome.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the 2025, that 2029, accept HUD, lead hazard control and healthy homes grant. Ms. Carver.
Yes, so we, our 2024 NOFA grant for the lead hazard control of healthy homes grant was accepted, it's a four-year grant. We were allocated $3,967, $361. I'm all tongue-tied, forgive me. Over the course of five years, this is a program that we currently work with the county to administer.
Would you be able to give us a summary, like, how does the program actually run? I think that over the last couple of years?
Okay. I'll give you over the last couple of years, but we are reimagining this program because we will be fully taking that responsibility from the county to administer this program in a couple of months. So you want to see the reimagined version, or you want how it's been running?
Well, I just a summary of how things are going in terms of currently.
Okay, so currently, the lead program has reached its benchmarks with the county every single year since exception with the county. We have, this past year, we've done 28 homes with the county, so we completed, which was our benchmark. So each year they give us benchmarks that we need to reach to satisfy the federal government, and we've exceeded those. We got our lead hazard report, and we're green. They label it by colors, red, green, and yellow, so we're green. So this program is running, it's administered through the county, so they go and do the intake process through the county health department, and then our lead assessor, and people, and also others from the development team monitor that program.
So when that is come back in house, it will be under your department?
It's under my department now, but we're just gonna now have an in-house intake person instead of doing the intake through the county.
Any other question?
No. So does us taking this in-house a little more, does that impact our, the finances of it, or...
It impacts finances roughly $124,000 a year.
Okay.
So, right, for personnel, but that also increases, there's a travel line, there's a marketing line, there's an advertising line, so versus that being paid out to the county and now the internal.
Any other question? Seeing none, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item, the continuum of care contract with Development of Broadway LLC, doing business capital region YMCA. Ms. Carver.
Every year we get awarded from the U.S. Department of HUD for the continuum care that we partnership with the YMCA for their shelter beds, and this is for our 2026 continuum care funding. We've been awarded $201,000, $201,722,000, and this will support the 20-bed units and administrative costs around this program.
Go ahead, please.
I was just wondering if it's still gonna be solely for men, or...
It is.
Yeah. Thanks.
And the other question? Seeing none, we have a motion to move this item forward.
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the Edward Fern Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. Chief. Good evening.
Okay, I come before you here with a legislative request to receive $15,000, which was awarded to the Schenectady Police Department by Assemblyman Angelo Santa Barbara, for, under the State Department of Criminal Justice Services and the United States Department of Justice. We plan to use this money to invest in license plate readers for the police department. So I'm looking for approval to accept this JAG Award Grant.
Question on this item. Go ahead, please.
So my question is around where these will be. I know that, I asked this question in legislative conference, so this is just everyone understands that these particular ones will be used versus what we currently have. So could you explain what we currently have, and then how these are compared in addition to...
So we have multiple license plate readers currently. We have them leading, coming off of our interstates, and we have them on our police cars, which are mobile. But our plan and strategy is to have them on all the arteries that feed into the city, so we know if a vehicle has come into the city or has left. And we are also putting that, we're also strategically placing them in our hotspot locations where we're seeing higher crime.
Go ahead, please.
And how many will this buy?
Well, this is, this doesn't buy that, that many, so I believe we're looking to purchase somewhere between three and five for multiple years. They typically run about 2,500 each per year, so we're, I think we're gonna maybe buy three of them and pay for them for three years.
Thank you.
So, so we don't necessarily, there's an ongoing cost that we, like, so if we get it, you have to pay, so it's not something that we own necessarily?
There are two different models, but the current model that we're looking at is a, is a pay-as-a-service.
There's two components of this software, the hardware that really keeps being updated and united, so it works to make an effect.
Any other question on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion to move this forward.
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement, GIVE, Chief Pfeffer.
Thank you. So for, for the GIVE grant, this is our 12th year of GIVE funding. GIVE is an acronym for Gun Involved Violence Elimination, which is a partnership with the, with New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCJS. For this grant, the county was awarded $1,148,671. Of that amount, $452,133 is dedicated to the Schenectady Police Department, and we do have a breakdown of how that is spent. Primarily, what we pay for are two dedicated detectives, some fringe benefits, some overtime for investigations and patrol, and for an analyst that's dedicated to the initiative supporting the entire countywide group.
Just one clarification, it says three, so it, I might, at least on mine, it says three detectives. Is that one?
Yes, you are correct. That's right, because two of them are GIVE, and one of them is non-fatal investigation, so we do have three.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was wondering, looking at the, looking at, looking at the personnel that are included in the grant, do they have, do they take on other responsibilities, or are they just focused on the GIVE grant?
All of the, all the personnel that are paid for under this grant have to work only on the initiatives that fall under the grant, so the three detectives, two of them only work on anything gun-related, and then the non-fatal investigation detective will only work on non-fatal shootings where they treat them like, like the victim is voiceless, but they, so they put that in-depth investigation into it.
And my other question is just, so I noticed that in terms of the youth component of the grant, it's like $2,525 that's going towards, towards that. I was just wondering how the amounts were figured out? In other words, because, you know, I was kind of wishing that there was more money going towards the youth component piece, but I didn't know if it was sort of mandated through the grant application, or, or how can we help?
Trying to find the area that...
Page 33 on, on the budget card, it says community engagement, transportation and engagement support for activities and programming.
Please computer, but there's also this part.
7,800, is that the one?
No, not this one. This is on page 29, it's 7,800, she's saying on page 33. Oh, that's the transportation.
Yes. Oh, is there more, though?
On page 29.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, I didn't see it, let me see.
Well, I guess I'll, I guess I'll just answer it by saying that there are four partners. There's the police department, the DA's office, the probation office, and the sheriff's department, and we meet as a group when we get the funding, and we all decide on who, which initiatives each individual agency are going to work towards, and then we break it up based on that funding. And I know that the probation department has $250,000, that, that's a minimum we have to give them, and then each agency decides how to break that down from the amount that they're allotted.
Okay, thank you, and I'm just with 7,800, so thank you for pointing that out.
So Chief, look, this is probably the piece of the last legislation that just went through as well, but you said, like, the cameras would be more in the hotspots. You know, were those hotspots for, like, hotspots of violence that's happening, hotspots? Or just like, just where we're seeing more crime, or is it, or will they be kind of deployed in the place where you see more violent crime, or just crime in general? How are we defining hotspots in this context, I would say?
So our, our crime analyst uses risk terrain modeling to create hotspots, and they take a variety of different factors to create that hotspot, so, so violent crime is certainly a component of it, but they, they take calls for service, traffic accidents, he has a formula that, that comes, that builds that hotspot, and that's why we really focus on that area and give it, give it the attention needed to cool it off.
Chief, 12, 12 years into it, how would you say, like, the outcomes, how have we done? What are some of the outcomes? I imagine we remove guns from the streets, guns fired, so effectively suppressing them on probation, but what are some of the outcomes, and how have we compared to our, the partners that received this grant? Are there any things that stick out that weren't doing really well, or things we can improve upon?
The statewide initiative has been a really big success. You know, we, you look back 12 years ago, the violent crime that was in this city, and we've made remarkable progress. A lot of it is because of the funding that we were afforded by this grant. Other communities have had similar successes statewide. I know Utica's had very similar, similar successes, and, you know, this initiative has been so, so well-received that the state has been giving speeches. We've been presenting this at a national level, and because we've been involved in it for so long, I'm part of that engagement. I'll be speaking about it in Baltimore next week for the, a national conference, so it's a, it's had a lot of good impact locally, and we're very fortunate to have the funding that we, that we get from the governor.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, please. Hey, Mr. Chairman, just following the chief passed out copy of the annual report in the police department, which is the first time put together this comprehensive document, and it tells a great story there, which things we're talking about tonight, some of the smaller components, I just want to make sure that people take the time to look that over, and if you have any questions, I'm available or the command staff at the police department is available.
Go ahead, please.
So for the individuals who are, whose salary is in this grant, they are already, they're already current SAD, so they would not then show up in our, and we, our budget of 12, because you said they're dedicated to this and this other. So this money shows up as money going in as a grant, but in terms of budgeting the outside of that?
The, the, the three detectives there do show up in our, our staffing numbers, and then the, the money that we receive from the grant is, is put into our budget through, as a, as revenue.
Thank you.
It is part of offsetting your expense in the revenue, yes, correct.
Any other question in regards to this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to move forward?
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the school community engagement officer. Chief Pfeffer.
Okay, so we, the contract was up with our, with the school district for our community engagement officers, and we, we renegotiated that contract under a new umbrella, which was to roll all of, all of the city expenses driven towards the school district, at least for public safety, under one umbrella, one agreement. So what we agreed to do is, is still fund the six officers full-time, which are four officers, one investigator, and one sergeant, assigned to the school district, and then we also rolled in all of the overtime that is spent after hours and built separately, all of the engagements that the fire department does throughout the year, and the alarm, false alarm calls for the burglar alarms. We rolled that all into, we did a quick analysis to see what, what it would be, the total take for the, for the city, and we came back to them and agreed that they will pay us $500,000 a year for the 2025 academic year, and then each year goes up 2% after that to account for anticipated raises. And then also embedded within that agreement was that they would allow us to create a separate agreement, which we'll talk about next, to place one of our second drone nest on top of one of their schools.
Chief, the number quoted here, that is not including overtime, is what we're saying this on? That is excluding overtime?
This new number will include overtime?
This number exclude overtime?
No, not, it will include it.
So the $500,000 quoted for the first year includes overtime?
Correct.
Some of the officers use your straight time, some are overtime.
Okay.
Other than the changes that you explained about incorporating the overtime, which I do have a further question, are there any other changes since the last contract? In terms of the number of officers, or any of that?
Really, the only significant change would be that, we always had six officers, but we, we agreed to change one of them to an investigator to give the school community better direct access to our youth aid bureau, so that there's a, there's a slight increase in, in what that, I think it's 2% above the patrol level grade that the investigator, investigator gets paid. Other than that, no, there's no other significant changes.
And for the, in terms of the $500,000 for the, that includes overtime and the other things you mentioned, is that based on what we paid out in prior contract? How, how was that number arrived at?
Yes, we, we took a look at everything we've done over the last three years with overtime, alarm bills, and with the fire department billed the school district, and then we took into account the new collective bargaining agreements for police and fire, and what the pay rate is, and, and then we, we did the math on the overtime end, but also, we added them all together, and that's how we, we came up with this number.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, I have a couple of things, but I just was wondering, how much overtime, like, do, do they use, do they have, you know, in terms of what they do at the schools? And then, do they do a lot of overtime, or is it most interest during the...
Yeah, I wouldn't categorize, categorize it as a lot, but it's, we're there often, so it's typically like, there's a basketball game, and you send one or two officers, or a football game, there's always just events where they like to have our officers, and, so what we did agree on is that we have a baseline, that they're gonna stay within that baseline, and if they, if they're asking for more, we did agree that if it's, like, more than 10% of previous years, that, that we're gonna talk about it, either, either not do it, or bill for, but we're all in agreement that we're gonna make it work. It's just that, you know, now that it's included, they're not gonna take advantage of us, and we're not gonna start saying no either, so...
I think it's a very positive program, so I'm excited that we're moving forward again, and I'm very excited that the fire department and fire education is included now in this, in this contract. I think that's terrific, so...
Yeah, I guess one other thing that I failed to mention is, is we're, we're talking with them about pathways, which is really for recruiting perspective of getting students involved and becoming police officers and firemen, firewomen, and, and learning more about what it takes to, to join these professions at an early age, so we're, we're, we're gonna be spending more time there doing that sort of work.
That's great.
And the fire department will too.
So two things, and also, that program, as far as working with the academic piece for driving processes, and trying to help them look at, like, because there's a lot of work going on there, students are taking all the different programs that school districts offer, and some of this, some of this curriculum, some of their curriculum, they can get credit for by, you know, engaging in this program, which I think would be really valuable, because now students, you know, they, they open some access to that. So my question was, you said just for the academic school year? Now, I know that there's so many programs, there's almost, obviously not a lot as much, but there's a lot, a significant amount of programs, and things are happening due to non-traditional, like summer hours and things like that, so the partnership that's agreed on is solely strictly just for academic school year?
Glad you mentioned that, and I, I forgot to mention this, that as a part of this agreement, the school district is providing their school safety officers to our parks to help us with, with pools in Central Park, and also with a lot of the activities that are going on there. So our, our community engagement officers are being assigned to the school, to the parks during those hours to continue the engagement with the youth in the summertime.
So Chief, when we rolled this program out, I know there was some, you know, pros and cons and things like that, over the last year, can you summarize for us some of the positive impact this program has benefited the school district and the public at large?
Oh, boy. So, yeah, I mean, admittedly, I'm not, I'm not hands-on as Lieutenant Dalton is, I wish he was here, he could talk to you all night about it, but I can tell you that some of the things that I mentioned at the school board meeting is that in the last nine years that I've been the chief, I think our relationship is the best it's ever been with the school district. I used to meet with Superintendent Spring maybe twice a year, when Superintendent Soler came in, I'd meet with him maybe... When Superintendent Soler came in, I'd meet with him maybe monthly. But I feel like I, I speak to Superintendent Cotto weekly, if not daily. We have a great relationship. We don't get nearly as many calls as we used to on the administrative side about what's going on in the school. Uh, I tend to think that, uh, things have stabilized there, and not only are they stable, but, um, they're at a point where they work towards solutions on any problems collectively. You know, it's not just the police, but they, our, our officers there have the power of the school safety officers to do their job better, which is ideally what we wanna do. Um, and, and we've had a lot of positive feedback from the students, um, on a variety of different things. Officers that have, have transitioned out of the school to, to different jobs within the police department, they, they, they've asked if, if they can go back for the end of the year parties, if they could, you know, remain engaged with them. So things like that, where the students are just really appreciative of, of being able to eat lunch with the sergeant that works there. And, you know, it turned into a thing where every day he had a different student wanting to eat lunch with him. So, uh, we had a, recently had a female, uh, police officer candidate that, uh, you know, came right out of the school district because she got interested in the job a few years ago. And, uh, and now she's actively looking for some assistance with getting ready to be one of our next officers. So there's, you know, there's, it was just a few of the experiences that I'm familiar with. Do you have any more?
Thank you for those, um, positive impact. Um, on the staffing, since we're gonna be moving six full-time, uh, officers, how would that impact your overall service to the community? Or should we look at hiring six additional staff to complement your?
Yes, we need six more officers.
Because you know, in terms of, you know, I'm just throwing that out because we're gonna put six officers into the school district. How would that affect your response to service to our community?
I mean, I, I like to think that, um, these six officers were additional officers when we added them. By them being there, we're able to respond to calls immediately rather than having to send officers that were on the street before there. So we're managing it very well. I mean, I'm not gonna lie, I mean, sometimes calls have to wait because we're busy, but, you know, we could throw bodies at, at our, these problems all the time instead of managing them. Our sergeants and our lieutenants in the field services bureau, they do a good job managing it. So it shouldn't negatively impact us, so. We're, we're currently working on a plan to, to, to look at the freshman academy, what kind of impact that will have. Most likely, we'll put the investigator there to have a presence there, and that's what we'll work out of. And, uh, but we're working on it, and I don't think there'll be any impact on it.
May I, I'm gonna go first.
All right, thank you. So, um, I know, I see in the packet, you do talk about the, how, uh, community engagement officers are, um, are chosen or appointed, and so it goes through that in detail. I did, so all of the officers who are, come on the force still have to go through the community piece where the community, that community group, where that community group, um, interviews them? When, and then, and now, when they go here, the school district also has to interview them. Do they have to go through that, um, community group again?
No.
So once they've been, um, gone to the community with an officer, when they want to become community engagement officers, then, um, then they just go through the school district, through, through your process, and then the school district?
Correct.
Right. Uh, if, 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 any officer, if something happens, and an officer, it just doesn't work out, how, how does that handle it? Once they're assigned there?
Well, we're fortunate that that hasn't happened yet, but we have a, you know, we have, we would handle it like any other officer that did something wrong. You know, we would, we would take corrective action and, uh, hold, hold them accountable. And, you know, should it be repeated, then we, we will remove them from their assignment, whether it's that assignment or any other one.
I'm not implying that they, that they did something wrong. It just may not be a good fit, because maybe they don't, you know, young people have been in the school district. So sometimes it can make, it becomes challenging, and maybe that's not for everyone, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, the untold story that probably has percolated throughout the police department is, this job isn't for everyone working in the schools. It's very busy. So I think that officers that go there do get burnt out because there's a lot going on, but they, they also know it's very rewarding. Um, but they know that, you know, those officers that stayed there more than two years, they're champs. We have a couple of them, but, well, you know, you've seen it with our sergeants that every year it seems like they're changing. It's because they get burnt out, and there's, you know, it's, it's, it's a very difficult job. I praise all the teachers out there that do it, year after year. It's, it's difficult being in that school. Mr. Farley knows.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
I, I did also forget to mention, I knew that, um, at the pool, um, we have been using CEOs, and Mr. Muzek, he says it's just been great because they already know the youth. So in terms of some of the youth that, you know, have gotten a little out of hand, um, some of the teenagers at the pool, um, they have that relationship already, they know, they know the kids. Um, so it's, that's been fantastic, um, um, at the pool. So I really appreciate the work that they're doing, and it's clear that they're getting to know, know the students.
Yep. Mr. Farley, you have?
Oh, okay, I see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After you remember, there's roughly 9,000 students in the school district. So all this is doing is matching up the resources with the demand. If these officers weren't there, the school district is still gonna generate calls for service. This, in fact, puts them in a more proactive way, is a greater level of deterrence, and this has really been a very successful program. Chief talks about some of the good things. There've been some less than optimal situations, too, where the officer being there has stayed ahead of problems, resolved them, where there haven't been, uh, extreme negative outcomes. And everybody should be proud of the work that they're doing and the partnership that we have with the school district.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, yes. Good point, ma'am, absolutely. I love what they do, um, this drone. What's that going, I, I know we wanted to use drones as, you know, to send them out to see what the problem was. Is that just for the school district? If, if you deploy a drone?
No.
No.
No. You're just using a building for it?
Yeah, the, we have, the, the partner, uh, our drone program has two drones. We have a one location on the police department, the second one will be on Central Park Middle School, um, which is the highest point in the city, on top of a building that's three stories tall. So it's a, it's a perfect spot for it.
It's really dividing the city into two, two locations, be able to implement that part of the.
Any other question regarding this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to move this item forward?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other business of for finance? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I'd like to pause the order, city development and planning. There are three items on the agenda. Item number one is a license agreement with the city of Schenectady for storage and use of drone and antenna, Schenectady City School District. Chief Clifford?
Okay, so as previously mentioned, uh, this is a separate agreement solely that covers the, the license agreement for the city of Schenectady to store our, our drone and drone nest on top of the city school, uh, Central Park Middle School. And we will, they will also be providing us, uh, power and internet for this. There was no additional cost associated to this agreement because it's covered in the previous one that we just discussed.
Any questions, Mr. Anderson? I do have one, and without disclosing the locations, how many of these, um, type of drone use antennas on buildings throughout? Do we have, is this the only location? You said it's the highest location, but we have other locations?
Uh, so this, so the police department, and then this will be the second location. And, um, the, the drones also work on cellular, uh, network. And, um, but this, uh, the antennas, the RF network that we're, we're building appears to be the more durable and strong network for us. So it is possible that we may look to put more antennas up throughout the city, ideally on city-owned properties, but we're, we're gonna just start with these two and see how it works. And if we start seeing some failures throughout the city, we'll, we'll, we'll see about other locations.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm all this.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item, uh, item number two is authorize the mayor or his designate to introduce a supplemental agreement number three with New York State Department of Transportation for the Broadway, Mill, and Phil, Fourth Street to Weaver Street, pin 1760.42. Mr. Wall?
Hello. Uh, the DOT reached out to, uh, our finance department last week about not being able to reimburse the city the full amount for this project, and they recommended that we pass a supplemental agreement. This is more of an accounting issue than anything else. The project has actually been done for several years, but we are in the process of closing it out in the DOT, um, notice this, uh, issue. So they've asked that we pass this supplemental agreement. In the footnotes, you'll see, it says, "This supplemental agreement has $100,000 plus $18,000 of Marchiselli funding of, that was removed in error on essay number two." So they caught the error, and this was to rectify the error.
So, uh, because I don't see that here, um, that we paid, we didn't have, we didn't, um, we didn't allocate enough money, is what they're saying? Is that what you're saying?
They mistakenly took out some money that they shouldn't have when they did supplemental agreement number two, so now they need to put it back.
Now, now they need to put it back?
Yep.
What's the impact on, on our budget regarding that?
No, it's just, we just need to get it to be reimbursed. We've already have it out there, we just have an allocation out there of, to get reimbursed, uh, probably about $100,000. This just to back the original assumptions of that project, we close out the works. So we've already submitted all the paperwork. Everything has been submitted to close out the project, however, when they went to close it out, the money was not in the account, and that was a reason for this internal error. So this fixes it on their end and allows us to get reimbursement.
Okay. Any other questions? Continue the motion?
I'm all this.
I'll second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and the, uh, item number three is the waiver of the apprenticeship requirement for central park tennis court improvements contract.
So right now, we have out a contract for the reconstruction of the tennis courts in Central Park. It was a complete reconstruction of the parks. There are 17 existing asphalt tennis courts. We'll be bringing forward a revised agreement with you at the next session. Uh, the city and USTA would like to completely reconstruct those 17 asphalt courts into 18 post-tension concrete courts. Post-tension concrete is a specialized skill. It is not a typical concrete, uh, that you would see around here in our sidewalks or pads. It is a, is a skill where you would be laying out these, these lines, these cables in the, in the concrete, pouring the concrete, and, and tensioning them to put some stress onto the concrete, and it helps so that the concrete doesn't crack, uh, as the playing surface wears. We do, uh, have been reached out to by several contractors over there outside of New York State, and they do not have an apprenticeship program. Um, the last time we did a waiver such as this was for the golf course irrigation contract, because that was also a specialty contract where we wanted to make sure that the person that we selected had at least five years' experience and certifications doing at least 50 courts. I believe that's what we're saying to do. So we would like to have the apprenticeship program waived as the bulk of the work is the concrete for the courts. Um, 18 courts, and then the ancillary work is fencing and things like that. So this is not a Wicks Law job, this is a, a single prime, um, contract. So this is what we're, we're looking to do.
Um, you did mention that, um, the contractors may, a couple of questions, maybe outside of New York State. So is it, we, no contractors within the state of New York came forward to?
I'm not aware of any, but I haven't, I haven't looked specifically. Um, uh, so, you know, typically, what we have done in the past, if we were worried, is that, you know, we would put it out, get bids back, or no bids back, and then go forward.
Can you go up and help him, sir?
All right. I don't know. It's okay.
It's okay. Um, but, so what I was saying is, we would, we would try to typically do is put this out, see what we would get back. If we got no bids back, we would put it out again with the waiver. However, if we were to do that, as crazy as it sounds, we would actually most likely lose all of the 2026 season because we're really trying to complete the work this year, the bulk of the concrete work, and let the concrete cure over winter, come back in the spring, and do a lot of the fencing and coatings. Um, because what the USTA is really banking on is that, that we have these courts constructed and ready to play on June 1st, that way that they can have a full season. Um, if we have to push this to next year, um, that means that they would lose the entire season. It's not to say that there isn't ways that we can work around it, that the USTA just however would not be in Schenectady, they would have to make accommodations elsewhere. So this is a way to kind of expedite, um, the project. Um, also, you know, just to, just full disclosure, is that I was originally moving forward with doing this on a source well contract. However, a source well is a purchasing agreement that the city is part of. However, as we move forward through that, it was told me by our purchasing agent that the source well contract can't be used for public works-type jobs, only for material style jobs. So this crossed the materials into a public works job. So we lost some time on that. We've been working back and forth on the design, and that's been changed a lot. Um, the USTA has been actively reviewing this project for four months to make sure that it meets all the requirements, because nobody wants to spend three and a half million dollars on tennis courts and then not have them exactly right to serve the tournaments. So this, a long story about how we just, passing it now and seeing what we get puts us in a better position to get the project done by June 1st of next year.
Okay. And one other question, concrete. I, I wasn't accustomed to seeing concrete on tennis court. So that's different, new, this is what the USTA said?
USTA is pushing the concrete because concrete does not heave like asphalt does in the life of a concrete tennis court. It's a minimum of 30 years, but they're seeing probably upwards of 50 years. So the only thing that has to be repaired is the, the coating. Um, if the courts themselves are a harder court, and they're working towards, uh, the USTA making, uh, these pre-tensioned concrete courts the standard for tennis court.
Right. Thank you. Any questions? All right.
I'm all this.
I'll second it.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. There's nothing else to come before city development and planning, and can you motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Here, adjourned, thank you very much.
Call the order of government operations, we have one item on the agenda. Mr. Nancy?
Thank you, Councilman Farley. And the council, so I brought forth a proposal to create a housing stability task force. Uh, we've all seen this, the issue of good cause law is very, it's been very divisive, but we have people that are very passionate about this. Um, there is that law of good cause law, we could, we could implement that. I don't think we have agreement even here on the council. Um, we certainly don't in the change, in, in the hearings that we've had. I voted against the public hearing because I, I am interested in creating a task force and getting to work, and looking at, is this the only option? Is this an option necessary? What are other jurisdictions doing? I've been, since, since this brought before us, I've been doing some research and looking at national practices, local practices, what laws are available, what funding are available, um, and, and other strategies. Instead of taking this template, is there level solutions that we can develop that we're relying on? Um, landlords have a difficult time, you know, we have good cause evictions, there are good causes. Maybe you have a task force, we can look at those causes, drill down more into that data. Is it because the individual suffered from mental health issues? Is it some other issues? Is there things we can remove that cause that they don't have to be there? Can we support landlords in that way? We can reduce evictions by not having to go to court. What have we done at that, what have we done in those cases? Um, code enforcement, how responsive are they to, to incidences? Are they threading over the codes? Are they getting there? What's their case look like? What are they doing to remove the issues that landlords bring up? Is there another kind of line? Can, can, um, tenants also report it to some, somewhere else where they don't feel retaliation? And the code, the, the code violation has been called, and it's been resolved, and we get the information vote to landlord and tenant, and make that process as, as more cooperative than adversarial. Um, I, I propose we bring together stakeholders, local stakeholders, um, from the agencies that know these issues the best, and come up with a real solution to Schenectady. I think that's, that brings us great potential for us as a community. And, and if, if that doesn't work, if we can't come to any kind of agreement, we have, we can opt into the cause law if, if folks agree to that. So I brought this idea forward, and I ask that, um, you would, for a vote through the council. Questions? Both sides.
I just wanna say, I think it's a great idea, um, and I think it's pretty well laid out. Um, I, I think it's a good way to get folks talking with one another, and, um, especially and especially bringing some of the experts together from some of the agencies. So I, you know, completely am very proud of it and I appreciate you putting forward.
Yeah, like, I like the idea that we're creating this task force. It's, I think it's going to help us to get to bring everyone up to the table to hear the concern and to address the concern that is lingering out there. You mentioned stakeholders, landlord, tenant, housing advocate, nonprofit, and developer. What I would like to see there when we create this task force is that these agencies, they are from Schenectady. I'm a landlord, tenant, housing advocate, nonprofit, and developer. We should have people who base in Schenectady. Especially some, there are some nonprofit that is based in Schenectady. We should select them, the housing advocate, developer, landlord, and tenant out of Schenectady because this is a Schenectady thing. We should have people from Schenectady advocating, meeting, working to come to a solution that will benefit the landlord and benefit tenants. And we can able to move forward with hearing concerns from our local residents and groups.
Question from Ms. Lawrence. Are you suggesting that people who serve on this task force, that they live in the city of Schenectady?
That is something we have done on the boards. You know, city and city boards, you have to, you must be a resident to serve on the board. So I want to make sure that we, when we set up this task force, it's comprised of people from Schenectady, nonprofit from Schenectady, housing group from Schenectady.
Okay, that's clear. So you're saying a nonprofit from Schenectady. It could be a Schenectady, I heard, number one, I agree that every, I would love to see all of our boards, if we're talking about city issues, have people that have lived in the city of Schenectady. I'm a fan of that. I know that sometimes you get to where there's areas of certain expertise that people offer that might not live in the city. I think that, you know, that's, is valuable here too. When you're saying like a nonprofit that's based out of Schenectady. So like a lot of the nonprofits that operate Schenectady, their board of directors, people don't live in Schenectady. A lot of their staff don't live in Schenectady. So I guess I'm trying to make it clear, clarify the distinction from, in order to serve this board, you have to live in Schenectady. That's what you're saying?
No. All nonprofits provide services in Schenectady. Let me just do an example. B.C.N.I. is SCAP. They are located in Schenectady. I want to see them on the board to help. That's the house.
So you don't have to live in Schenectady?
I want the organization to be in Schenectady. I want housing advocates to be in Schenectady. I don't want somebody from Bethlehem to come and be on this board because we don't do that on our city boards, having non-residents. So I think that's what we need to do to focus on Schenectady. This is Schenectady concerns.
Okay, so, okay, so you're not, you don't have to?
No, for nonprofit, nonprofit has to be based in Schenectady.
If your work is Schenectady, you could live anywhere, but work is Schenectady. You're saying that that's correct.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of taking an agency exiled wildly to help us solve our problem here.
Well, I definitely, in reading this, I was thinking of some of the nonprofits that are related to housing and knowing some of the executive directors, for example, I wasn't sure that they necessarily lived in the city of Schenectady. So I would too suggest that we make sure we have irrelevant providers represented. But if an executive director, I don't even know, but I mean, let's say they lived in Scotia and worked in Schenectady, at a Schenectady housing-related agency, that I think that would be okay. I guess also I would say that it would seem to me that we want to make sure that the landlords, in particular, weren't necessarily, the landlords that might be a part of this task force wouldn't necessarily be, you know, from New York City or something like that. So I feel like that's more important, I guess, than the nonprofit piece in terms of, I would want to make sure that landlords are locally based. The representatives on the task force.
So we're saying, any landlord representative that's on this task force would have to resign in Schenectady?
I, I think that would be important. But I mean, I've been debating that, but that's about it.
Any other questions, Congress members?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Mancini, how would these individuals serve nonprofits or whatever? Who would pick them? How would they end up on the task force? If we'd want everyone at the table? What are your plans on who would be the head of this task force? And how would these individuals, what would your agenda be? Who would make the agenda instead of just a whole bunch of people just sitting around talking about things?
Yeah, I, I.
What more do you have for us?
I'd like to select people interested in being on it, but have a chair, co-chair, and we can bring nominations to the council for approval, if you wanted to do that.
Who would you put that up to?
All council members for recommendations. I'm thinking Director of Development, any of the principals, landlord associations, SLIC. You know, I'm certainly open for recommendations. I don't want to go ahead and do it on my own, but folks, there's folks from the Schenecty Foundation. I think any of those groups that have been very active, we get the representatives on each of those groups. So we're hitting with those folks that are really passionate and close to this issue.
Absolutely, which we all are. But who's going to?
I could begin that process and maybe work with Alexandria if she's closest to this issue for the city.
Would Alex be the staff person?
Yeah.
We'd make staff available to support it, but Alex would be one of the part of that.
I could work with the mayor and, because in Portefield, to develop that list.
And how long do you think that'll take in addition to the four months when we would want an answer back for this task force?
I would like to have it after, if it were to pass, within 30 days, we have a membership, recommendation for membership.
Would you be expecting resumes or, you know, from individuals who want to be on this task force?
I think I'd like to, yeah, people can send recommendations of who they, and some rationale why they would be appropriate for this task force that they have subject knowledge on it.
So you see this as a, instead of good cause, this task force?
For me, this, and I appreciate you bringing it up. Obviously, this is an issue very, people are very concerned with. For me, I don't know enough about the issue. What's been done, what's worked, what's not? I'd like to get more information. I thought this would be a way for us to get there. It doesn't seem this may pass if we voted on it today or, and decided we make new channels. This is not for us to get to work and say, maybe we don't need it. Maybe the people involved in this, maybe as a city, we can come up with a better plan. Because then, because given this, we'll drill down more into that data. Will the people really affected by this? What are the causes for you to be affected? Can, what we can do? What can we do? Side of the box, threes out those. And maybe that we can do better than the law. I've been, you know, partner of laws passed, implementing them and writing them or assisting them. And the best, for me, the best initiatives, those are locally driven and the people are aligned on and behind them. I don't know that could possibly get us there. If I take something we develop collectively, that was that specific in cities connected here, I think that would go a long way, effectively solving these issues.
So my question is, because good cause, the main purpose of good cause is to offer tenant protections, need tenant protection. And nowhere do I see this task force that's not offering tenant protections. So I don't see how this could stand in place for good cause because if the primary function of good cause, this task force doesn't address. Other concerns would be, I think it's a good idea, but in its appropriate context, again, not let replacing good cause because it doesn't offer anything. It's really having people get together and look at data and then make their, help, may help us with some information that right now already exists. I mean, like it says, like, you know, looking at displacement and eviction data, we have that data. And actually, that data was presented to us already. And what I don't want this to be is to look at something that's kind of performative in a way to kick things down the road and not address this because we're talking about the people's livelihood. And this would be months and months before this could even get formed. And then once it's formed, we have to be, for the operational lives to get back and give us data that we already have right now. We have that, all of the issues that are, that are, that are, these are here. There's already data. And so I guess my question would be, what more data would you be looking for in order to like support good cause? What more data?
When you talk about tenant protections and the reasons for good cause could be because of behavioral issues, right? They're disruptive, they're not paying their rent. I don't know, them all of those two stand out. And that would bear out in the data. And then what have we done to stop, to remove those issues? Is it, okay, good, good cause, so 90% of the evictions, 70% meet good cause criteria, this law won't do much. But if 70% of the time, we can intervene and come up with solutions, we can reduce that number down to maybe 20, 30% because we've developed strategies that are addressing behaviors that are leading to an eviction. Is it lack of funds, what's available vouchers, are there reimbursement rates? Are there reimbursement grants for reimbursement? What have we done for behavior? Have we addressed that? If we're going to pass this on to someone else, could we evict this person? They're going to go to the next place. They're going to go again into other ways. What have they been about in the social service? If something that can help with that, you know, we solve those crises, respond to crises in a way that works when we keep them in those homes. Once they're in those homes, what have we done to stabilize that? What supports we have in place, strategy? Do we call the police? Are there things they can do to offer support to the tenants that provide that reason of need to evict or call the police? I'd like to look at that data, what nature of the cause was having our co-enforcement office? Are they responding in a way we hope that they would? Is it serving residents, both tenants and landlords? We have a lot of, you have total information, but I don't have enough specifics to get what that looks like. Any little things we can look at to see what we can do to build up our system, to support both tenants and landlords?
Okay, so a lot, a lot said and a lot of good things. But like when you talk about disruptive tenants and non-paying issues, under good cause as it exists, those are both good reasons to evict.
Right.
So in other words, if we had passed good cause and then we got information that there's a lot of evictions for non-payment, that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an issue. So in other words, the good cause already allows for that. And what you're saying is, I think it's good to look at the data. I think there's as much deep diving data as we can do, we can do. But the data that is not anecdotal data is the data about us being third in the state for evictions right now. Like that, so we don't, we don't have to do a study on knowing that we have an eviction problem here, right? So this is why good cause addresses that. So again, I don't think that it's wrong or a bad idea. I think in the context of not passing good cause to do this, I think it, it doesn't offer any of the protections that good cause. And we already have the data as far as evictions, you know, it's a problem. And then, oh, sorry. And then part of the, and some of the other things that are in the legislative request card, like having, you know, public forums and engaging stakeholder voices. We just put forward to have a public hearing, but it got voted down. See what I'm saying? So it's like, it's difficult for me to see why, if we're looking for public voices and stakeholder information, and we bring forth the opportunity to do that as a public hearing, why, why wouldn't we go with that? See what I'm saying? So it doesn't look like that would be.
Well, I, I, I'm brought to the exam.
Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Because unfortunately, I think this task force won't.
Yes, is he responding?
Yeah.
So I gave the reason why I can support the public hearing. I wanted to get busy on this. With the good cause, you look at 90%. Now, I don't know, you know, we're at that level. And if, like I said, 70% didn't meet good cause standards, nothing for the landlords to worry about, right? But it is for the tenants because we didn't do anything other than that. And so what are we doing about that to keep them in those homes? So the placement's not disruptive. And if we don't do something like this, we miss that opportunity to take a look at that data and keep them in the homes and what supports aren't we giving or providing? That maybe if we've taken a critical look, we could be avoiding many of those evictions.
That's, I agree 100% with that as far as giving the data. President Porter's on this, you want to have some more product?
So I think that, you know, which has already been said, that a lot of the data that you're looking for already exists. And I don't believe that it requires an additional committee to get the data because it exists and can one or two people do it, I think. I believe that there are agencies out there already that have this data readily available. And if you need it in a compact way, then just bring it all together, that's fine. And that makes sense to me. And also, you talked about, about co-enforcement, about keeping people in their apartments. And SCAP does a lot of that work already. So there's already a lot of the work being done that this call, this call, this task force calls for. So my concern is that, as Ms. Dettoro has asked about the process of getting people on board, so onboarding people is a whole process in itself. So we're adding that time to the 120 days that you've mentioned. In addition to that, then there's a selection process. That, for me, is a little bit up in the air because when you ask for a public, a public hearing, any and everyone can come to that. Then we don't select who, whose voice is heard at this table, at the housing table. And just for the record, because within your, within your legislative request, it says something about us being reactive. And I just want to, and I know that you weren't on the council back then, but in 2022, we did have a housing forum. So this discussion has been going on for a while. It's not new. The other concern I have is that in terms of who will be on the task force, if we're looking for representation that's people who I feel like the best voice to be heard is the people who are impacted, not, be it landlord or tenant. And for the individuals who I believe good cause mostly impacts in terms of tenants, they don't have the liberty or the extra time to be on a task force because I'm guessing that if you want to do this, it can't be during work hours. It'd have to be after hours. And then, again, how do we, how do we decide who can come and who can't come? So those are, you know, those are concerns for me. And again, I think it's just one more burden upon tenants and landlords, quite frankly, that we, you know, do more studies of things that, again, I believe we're already here, that we can just pull the data together. Within that time of onboarding, we could get that, that information together if that's the concern. So I'm not sure of how creating a task force gets us to the point of gathering more information beyond what currently exists because it's just already there. And again, for me, having, like us selecting who could and could not be on there, how do we make those determinations? I find that challenging. And was mentioned, do we, do people submit their resumes? And serving on a board, a city board, I believe is, I believe, serving on a city board is different than, than a task force. And in my, in my experience with task force, we've never asked people for their resume. They just kind of like show up and say, I want to be on the task force and, and they're included. So, and this, I think, closes, kind of makes it more of kind of a closed group as opposed to a public forum, a public hearing, which any and everyone, regardless of their position, can be heard. So I, I, again, think we can gather the information without creating this task force, which at this point in time, we're talking 30 days, 120, 150 days that we even, you know, to get through this process, which I think information that's already current. And within, in terms of good cause, you did say, you know, maybe we should look at something that's more local and that would work. Is it possible that we look at good cause and see what works? Because we've not had that discussion about. Because we've not had that discussion about, okay, here's the good cause. And there was one thing we said about what a small landlord looks like, and then the percentage. Have we looked at other parts of the cause and said, this works for Schenectady or this doesn't? Because there's already a framework out there. And is that a better way to go, as opposed to like, let's just throw that out the window and let's start from scratch?
Well, I think the vision was that we would, that would be a critical task of this group to look at that and what's been done, how does that work? And again, I don't, I haven't been in the council here, a year. I don't know that we take it, and we take all of that out there, but actually, you know, people can come and do public testimony, but it's not a conversation. And then, we come together and have a vision, and we want a state that works for both landlords and tenants. That's the vision, that's why we're all here. Now, let's create that. I don't know that we've ever done that, but that's, to me, could have powerful outcomes and outcomes that work. Let's take that data in a way that this is the end game, because it works for both parties, all parties. So, how do you get there? And we take that data, and this is the direction we want to go. And I think that could have a powerful outcome. I don't know that in the law itself to get us there. That's my thinking behind this, is let's take this on and let's develop this.
So, can I just clarify?
Sure.
So, just to clarify, you're stating that the task force would be, would gather information, all the findings, et cetera, and so on. And I am saying that that already exists. And in my opinion, we don't need a task force to gather information that currently exists. It's not a new information. Is that individual, and I'm not trying to put work on city staff, is that individual? Is it you and whomever who can just gather the data? I don't think it takes a hundred and twenty days to gather the data, because it exists already. It's just a matter of, because it won't be new. It's already there. So, so do we, we can't just take, you know, gather the data? Again, it's, I feel like, let me just say that we're just kicking the can down the road to gather data which currently exist. And I don't know that we need to, to create a whole task force. And again, who's going to be on it? Who chooses them? I think that's a lot that hammers out. And ideally, we always say it's going to be this amount of time that we allot to that. But we all know, in the work that we do, that sometimes we put a time limit on it, but unfortunately, sometimes we have to go beyond that. So, I don't want this to be an ongoing process.
Well, I actually think that it goes beyond good cause. I think that what Mr. Mancini, at least this is how I'm interpreting this, is the idea that we're looking at housing stability, we're looking at how we think about the quality of lives for the people that live in the city of Schenectady. And so, you know, again, I think it's not even about the data, which, you know, I know that you, in particular, for example, when we talk about people that are homeless, I think you wanted more information and wanted to do more research about homelessness issue. This would be something that, you know, this task force would be talking about housing issues that might also include the idea of homelessness within the city. So, it would actually help us, help frame some of the, it's not just about good cause. I guess it's what I'm trying to say. This is really talking about all levels of housing stability within the city of Schenectady. Am I right? Is that what I'm reading in your proposal? So, I think that bringing people together around a table where they really can have that chance to look at the bigger picture of housing in the city of Schenectady, whether it's homelessness, whether it's, you know, tenants' rights, whether it's landlord's rights, whether it's how do we educate both landlords and tenants about their rights? I mean, I feel like, in essence, so the task force might, I'm just spitballing here, but having been a part of, you know, other groups like this, you know, maybe they're going to put together a calendar of activities that would include different types of educational forums that would help to bring information to the people that need it, whether it's tenants or whether it's landlords. As well as then, we as policy, you know, working with staff, I should say, but I mean, it gives us that overview of things that maybe each of us in our own experiences and in our own work, in our own volunteer lives, our professional lives, we've seen and heard a lot. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't frame this around good cause. And I also just do want to hesitate, I want to add that I'm sure you all have seen that there's no deadline on good cause. It's not like when we discussed the cannabis issue, where we had a deadline of December 31st, whatever year that was, and we had to make a decision by that time. There is absolutely no deadline on good cause eviction law. So, I actually think we should table that for a little bit, because that opting in peace is not anything that has to happen with any urgency. But this idea, I feel, gives us that opportunity to, and I don't, I don't need just data, I mean, but really here, you know, more in terms of, I mean, we've had a lot of people that have come and spoken at public hearings, which is why, not public hearing, but at our council meetings, which is why I voted against the public hearing. I really feel like we've had a huge amount over an extended period of time of input from both tenants and landlords on that. But I'd like to see them come together at a table, in the same way any of us do on committees at our, at our jobs, and really be able to take a deep dive into housing stability in the city of Schenectady. So, that's why I would support this.
So, just to give some context, so, One Schenectady is doing a group that is, that they're doing that right now. There's not the one thing that I've heard that isn't happening right now with One Schenectady. They have multiple community stakeholder meetings. There's been landlord representation, tenant representation, elected officials, I don't even, I can't remember where I went with them. So, this is happening right now. So, just kind of want to make sure that people understand that, just based on what the description is here, that's happening now. And so, I've seen significant distinctions between that and what we're talking about here. I guess my question is, so now, kind of flushing through this, Ms. Mancini, so, this wouldn't, if this is, to Ms. Patrick, that goes beyond good cause, it's not just around good cause, which I agree, I think anytime, more conversations that we have, more people, we get involved, house stability, a great thing. So, are you saying that now, that this wouldn't be, this is something that could happen in combination with a good cause? Or is this something that can only happen in your opinion, separate from good cause?
Both can be true.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So, you, I'm sorry.
No, no, but yeah, just for me, I'd like us to have an opportunity to develop solutions that are Schenectady-generated and that are specific to Schenectady issues, the players, our Schenectady residents, the coenforcement, even so, the service, I'm sure, has a role that we want supposed from there and beyond the community. And specifically, are we really drilling down into the real issues that lead to evictions? But the good cause, when I'm going to get there. So, I'd like to, for me, I'd like, before we pass the law, have a need to do that, we address it and resolve it ourselves. Without that, indeed, would be, to me, like, great, you got home run, but that wouldn't work.
But the issues that Schenectady is third in the state for eviction people right now, and that task force could probably give us some really good information, but again, the function of good cause, because I think that we're, what we're saying might not exactly be what we're meaning, because I'm picking up on different things here. It's like, good cause, the purpose of that is to keep people from wrongly evicted, so like, evicted. So, I guess my question was to you, is hearing the people that came to the rail, do you believe that people are getting retaliatory evictions? Do you believe that what they're saying, that some people, that that's something that's happening?
I'm sure that's happening. I'm sure the people that are doing that will skirt the good cause law as well.
But, yeah. Well, I mean, I mean, we have all sorts of laws that people break them all the time, that's the reason why we have them, right? So, like, the fact that if I'm a bad one landlord and I'm going to skirt the good cause law.
So, those, you know, bad payers, they get rent, but, you know, they're going to do it, but we're going to hit that.
Absolutely. That's so.
We don't need the law.
Now, we're talking, that makes sense to me. So, so, I guess my, the next point, then, Mr. Turo, I'll go to you, would be, Ms. Patrick, you said that, you know, there's no deadline on good cause, like there is on other, on the cannabis, you have the cannabis, that was, well, the key distinction from that, to me, that we need to make is that, one was talking about, you know, whether we can have a dispensary, and the other one, sort of other things, and cities can be, have some place to live. And so, there is a deadline out there for the people that have come to us, that we've heard the voices at the rail, unless we don't believe them. And I've heard landlords' voices at the rail around the horrible things that tenants have put them through. And I believe them too. I believe them a hundred percent. I believe that that's happening. Where we're getting, where the disconnect is happening is that all the negative and horrible stories that are, I believe to be true, landlords are saying that the tenants not paying their rent, they're destroying the property, they're breaking the lease, they're having more people in the property than what they're supposed to, all of those things, under good cause, permissible. So, the landlords under good cause, for all the things that they're saying, it offers those protections for them to, to evict. It is not one thing that you've mentioned, that anyone has mentioned at the rail, it doesn't. So, what I'm saying is, at this point, like, is this, if this is something that you're willing to, that you'd like to see happen, I could see why a task force would be a good thing. But people are getting, if you know that people are getting retaliatory evictions now, and it's happening now, then we need to do something about that now, because it doesn't hurt anyone in the way that landlords can still evict every person who damages property or doesn't pay their rent or breaks their lease, under good cause. So, again, I'm saying to you, okay, I agree, that's, and then we can talk about the task force, you know, what the task force can do with labor, but to substitute it in for good cause is, quite honest, unphasing, it just doesn't make sense. Because if you know that people are being illegally evicted, and you believe that, then we need to do something to address that, and that's in good cause of us.
Well, maybe.
Also, okay, so, so that be clear, so let's be clear, because what you're saying is that people are not being.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I don't, it is law and its application interpretation of it, is going to solve that. I think us drilling down to the data, what's happening, will.
So, tell me, what more, what data are you looking for? Like, what other data?
Reasons for eviction, retaliations, what does that look like? Is that, is it a coenforcement thing? Is it, like, somebody's going to be evicted, they called code, now they can't be evicted? There are a lot of, there's a lot of information out there. Is it for non-payment of rent? Is it the person's having episodes and they have to be evicted, so they're going to push them off to another landlord? Is there ways we can stabilize that? What currently do we do in cases like that? How often do the police, I mean, the incidents of domestic violence, police responding, what do we do in those situations? How do we stabilize people in their home and community? Let's take a broader look, can we do something like that where you don't have a need for the law? That, that data we don't have.
So, then, I agree with all the things that you're saying, these are good things, data we should give them. But then, I don't see how the data offers any protections for people while we wait possibly, you know, three to four months in the city with the highest, with one of the highest eviction rates in the state, as we wait another three or four months, and we're talking about displaced families. Nothing that you're suggesting with this task force would impact good cause. So, I guess what I would say to you is this, I guess this is a question, and maybe could be my thought part on this. We know that it's happening, and maybe the way to go about it would be to opt into good cause. And then, the task force, part of the function of the task force, can look at how it's impacting the city, because that's information that we don't have right? We don't have that information right now. But we do have the high eviction data, we do have, some of the people came and presented us with a different type of eviction data in the city of Schenectady. We had, you know, that wasn't, again, that wasn't like someone's opinion, that was, you know, these are, these are both from credit data sources that they cited and the information they gave us. So, maybe the thing to do would be to opt into good cause, for offering those protections to people, right? And then, use the task force to look at how it's impacting people and address some of those other issues that we're talking about that good cause may, would you establish, would you be open to that?
Well, I like the idea of using good cause as a motivator to bring people to the table and want to solve problems, like if you were to pass it, I mean, lose the group or lose that commitment.
Who do you think won't come to the table?
I don't know, I just think it's good to hang over, to have as a motivator for all of us and for landlords and organizations.
I see that point, point of view, but it's like, for leveraging people's livelihoods, to give people, if somebody really cares about us.
You're dealing with people's lives, I agree with you, so I don't know if passing this law, I think good cause is good, but I'm rather, for something very, for the city of Schenectady, I don't know that good cause gets us there. But that's just my thought. Like I said, we can go, yeah.
Anybody else who wants to participate in the council, I'll just answer the question. I'll get, what are, Ms. Patrick?
And now, I just lost what I was going to say. I really, really, really want to stress that, again, I mean, I feel like you're turning it more into just trying to have a conversation again about good cause, which isn't, I mean...
It is, it is, it's in his legislation.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I think that, it seems like you're trying to debate here on the good cause, on opting into good cause, and I don't think that that's what the purpose of this discussion should have been. I also want to say that it's been my experience over the last several years of watching what's been going on and what's going on in the state, that, again, I just want to caution folks that we don't even know what's going to happen with good cause eviction legislation. I mean, they could change that law, they could change the elements of that law. If you read about the law, I mean, you can see that it still could be in flux after, after something happens. Look what happened with the cannabis dispensary. You know, we had a deadline, at which we had to make a decision. We made a decision, and after we made the decision, the state went ahead and changed the regulations within the premise of the law. And they started saying, you know, things like, there were only going to be a certain number of licenses, that could only be a certain number, that could only be a certain number of dispensaries that could be, I mean, all this stuff that came out after we all had to make a decision about the law. Here, first of all, I don't want to go back to the whole good cause eviction, but I will say, since we don't have to rush into good cause eviction, because there's no deadline for what we, what we do on that, I like the task force idea, because it brings together folks, different voices in the community. Yes, we heard them in the public, in the city council, so I did vote against the public hearing. But this is a way to bring in experts, bring in somebody from SCAP, bring in somebody from, I, I don't know, I mean, I would say, like, all the various organizations in our community, as well as some representation by landlord, representation by tenant. The One Schenectady piece, I have to say, sometimes I read the stuff that's coming up, and I think, well, we still are the people, the city is still the people that are going to have to pass certain things. Like, for example, right now, they're talking about an app or whatever, I mean, landlords are talking about the preferred listing, I can't remember the exact name of it. I mean, it all is going to operate like separately from the city. I mean, really, the city should be taking the lead in looking at housing, in looking at housing stability. And so, I think this is one way of trying to do that. So, get, try to, let's all try to get away from the good cause eviction piece for a second. Let's get, let's get away and just start to think about the housing situation in our city in general. And that's where I think, and again, I mean, I appreciate that the Schenectady Foundation is, you know, having forums, bringing folks together, but again, it's, stuff is still going to have to come to the city, you know, really. Or, and the county, I mean, by the way, there were no county representation at the forum that I did go to, and I was sitting there thinking, wow, I mean, that's where public health is, that's where social services is. I mean, like, you know, we should have those legislators sitting with us, talking about housing stability here. So, you know, I think, I think that there has to be a multi, what's the right word? You know, a multi-pronged approach to, to the general issue that I would like to see happen. Because, I mean, how many of us have been involved in this for years, trying to look at homelessness, trying to look at people that are living in poverty, and trying to find solutions? And so, you know.
So, just wanted to add that. So, just wanted to add, in this quarter, number one, I just want to say, you're kind of mischaracterizing what I'm doing here. I want to read you the first sentence in the legislation, it says, "The city of Schenectady is currently evaluating whether to opt into New York State Good Cause Eviction." That's sentence number one. The first sentence in evaluation of next paragraph is, "Rather than focus narrowly on the reactive policy such as good cause eviction." So, to say that I'm taking this legislation and making it about good cause, when the legislation itself is about doing something other than good cause, that's what's really happening. Would you agree with that?
I know, I know what you're saying, and I do see that in here, but I think, and again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Mancini, but it seems like the topic of good cause eviction that has been brought to our table is what might have helped him consider suggesting that, you can jump in here, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but might have been one of the impetus's for suggesting that the task force might be a good thing to have come to be.
Sure, sure, and the only thing I'm saying is that, if it's characterizing it as a task force instead of good cause, then that's one conversation. If we're having a conversation about a task force, then the cause doesn't even need to be a part of the conversation.
Well, it doesn't do events about housing.
So, right, so therefore, I'm not characterizing this about good cause, the legislation itself is about good cause, it says it in both paragraphs. And also, I would add that, you're saying that the laws could change, but everything, there's not a piece of legislation that we don't, that we don't pass right now, that could be subject to change. That's part of being a responsible body of government. We've said a lot of things, and then the state might have did something, the feds might have done something that changed the landscape laws, but that's true for anything, so that's really not a good reason not to add. And I would also say, you're saying that we don't have to rush, reality is, yeah, we don't have to rush, we all, we all own our homes, and we're not possibly facing eviction.
That's not what I'm saying.
What, what, what I'm saying is, Patrick, what you said was, we don't have to rush, what I'm telling you is...
There's no deadline for opting into good cause eviction, that's what I have.
Okay, okay, I'm just going to put you there, but people would fly to the state this quarter.
Well, just want to explain, let's just be clear, the reason that this task force conversation even came about is because of the good cause eviction. So I don't think that we can discuss one without the other. I think that would be, it just is impossible, because that, I would believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was the driving force about why Mr. Mancini said, oh, I looked at the cause, maybe that's not it, so let's look at the task force. So I don't think we can leave that out of the conversation, and really have a robust conversation about this particular task force. Once Schenectady was mentioned, and, you know, there's some, you know, they're like, maybe they weren't doing the best job, but if there's already an organization already doing that, why we don't use these resources that you're talking about, these people that you're talking about, and join the effort that's already happening? Because they're already quite a few steps ahead, because they've already been doing this study. We know that they have people who are directly impacted, we know that landlords have been at those meetings. So, you mentioned that everything has to come back to the government, so why are we trying to do something separate and apart, when there's already an organization, a group of organized individuals who are stakeholders, who are impacted, who have a level of expertise, who are already participating in this? Why a separate and apart task force, doing something similar to the work that's already being done? And if we feel like, if we join with this group, and we look at and say, well, I think you're missing this mark, that to me makes a lot more sense, as opposed to saying, okay, I know that you're doing that over there, but let's do something and be, do something over here, and we're not doing this together. So, I think a better idea is, or let me build on your idea, I'll say it that way, is that we look at what's already being done and join efforts with that group. I don't, and I have to agree with Mr. Farley, I don't know that we necessarily have to wait till everything is concrete and set in stone, because that never happens. Are we throwing out the good for the perfect, because the perfect is never going to happen? At least, I've never seen it happen in my life. There's always some things that can be done differently. And also, there is urgency now, for the people who this is impacting. So, good cause has to be a part of this conversation, whether we like it or not, and again, I offer the opportunity that we take a look at the actual legislation and say, this works, this doesn't work. There are some clear things, like, if your tenant's not paying rent, you take them to court and they have to go. There are some really clearly laid out things, and my recommendation is that we look at what good cause is, and look at the good landlords, because I don't think that landlords who are doing the right thing right now are the landlords who are really going to be impacted by this. And yes, some people will slip under the radar, whether it be landlords or tenants, it's just that, I'm sure that landlords can tell you, that's the nature of the business, and tenants will tell you the same thing. So, again, I don't think it's targeting the landlords who, the ones that I've spoken to, explaining to me how they're handling what they do. To me, good cause, from what I've, all the legislation that I've read, the pros and the cons, is that the landlords who are already doing all the wonderful things will not be negatively impacted. We're already looking at code enforcement and all of that. So, and code enforcement, as I understand it, goes in, when tenants call, when landlords call, they already go in. It's, you know, so that wouldn't be an addition. So, why not join with Once Schenectady and make it Once Schenectady?
Yeah, thank you. So what I'm sensing here from Mr. Mancini, the legislative records, is more of a long-term solution. How do we work to benefit Schenectady's landlord and tenant, and not pity each other, in this group against each other? How can we come up with a solution? Bring them to the table, and bring agencies that are advocating for tenants, advocating for landlord together, and let them work out a long-term solution. That's what, that's what I'm sensing from this description, and it's driven towards that. It's not more of like, well, we don't want this, and we don't want that. Bring people, people, discuss, gather information, and let's move forward and see what we can do to benefit, you know. It's a burning topic. I mean, we can sit down here, we can debate, and we can debate every word against each other, but it's, we're not getting anywhere. So we need to do something to benefit our Schenectady residents. And that's what Mr. Mancini is trying to do here. Set up this task force, which I think is a good thing, bringing people out to the table, discuss ideas, come up with solutions, and to, you know, come up with a solution, come up and address it, and move forward, and let's see what we can do in terms of these concerns. I mean, I don't feel at this point in time that we're going to move forward with that legislation, that's always, I don't know, sensitive, but here is a solution for us to add something to the table and to make sure that we can do something that benefits both parties. And we can, we can sit here and we can talk about Schenectady is a turd in eviction in the state. Are we, are we asking ourselves, or are we asking the question, why is Schenectady a turd position in the state? Are they all because landlords, they just wake up one morning and decide to evict all their tenants? Or are they bad tenants? We need to address that, we can't say that, oh, we're a turd in the state, and make us look good or bad, but how does that, how did they arrive at that, in the court system? Is it because landlord, you know, want to clear their property, is tenant bad? Those are the things this task force will be addressed, it will address that. And those things will come to light, because we're going to have, I set up over and over, we have good tenants, we have bad tenants, we have good landlord, and we have bad landlord. And there's no secret about that. Bring them to the table, let them address the concerns, we gather information, we come back and say, really need to do this. Here is the information that we're gathering from all the agencies that are dealing with tenants, agency in Schenectady, that are dealing with tenants, agency that are dealing with landlords, and the landlord group. And people outside of the landlord group, who in Schenectady would like to come to this forum and address concerns, and let's, us as a council, yes, we want to generate ideas, but we as a legislative body, we are discussing opting in to good cause eviction. We're trying out to come up with a solution, other than that. If that's not going to pass, to come up with a solution, how do we benefit? And I think it's our responsibility, as a legislative body, to discuss it, create our own group, as Mr. Mancini recommended here, invite all the agencies on board, whoever would like to join, and let's hear from them, and let's move forward. And Mr. Toro talked about, how do we reach out to these people, how do we onboard them? I think if this work passes, to create this task force, it is upon us, council, and the help of staff, to reach out to the agency, and to get them onboard, and we onboard them. I don't think it's a hard process. And I get them onboard and let them join, and the task force, and let's discuss it openly at forums. We're not going to stretch it out for four, five, six months. We should have time, timeframe, cut off time, bring back information to us, discuss, move forward.
Yeah, so, to your point, Mr. Louver, it sounds like we're asking for a public hearing, which we definitely had on the table at our last council exam, that's what it sounds like to me, you're saying you have people in a public forum expressing their thoughts and ideas.
Mr. Farley, if you're going to define my extent, I'm not going to do that to you. I'm telling you my point, I'm not calling for public, I'm calling for a task force, that people can sit down openly, and discuss this as a forum, we come back with a solution to the table, and move forward with creating whatever recommendation on the task force. So if we can't opt in, we have a solution, a long-term solution, that is mentioned in this LR here, by Mr. Mancini, looking for a short-term, long-term strategy to stabilize housing without increasing regulatory burden unnecessarily. This is in the legislation here, or Mr. Mancini presented. That's what I'm focusing on. So I'm not going to allow you to mince my word back into public hearing, please, let's not do this.
So hold on, so let me be very clear with you, Mr. Louver, and anyone else that's listening. I'm not trying to mischaracterize your words. What the words you just said was, bring people together to talk in a public forum, that's the word you just said. So hold on, please, so that's why I said, it sounds like...
Bring agencies, to the task force.
And so, what I'm saying to you, again, is that's what it sounded like. If you're saying no, that you're, that you're saying that you don't want people, you're being very specific to the task force, having people come to talk, okay, I'm just saying what the words are used. So I guess, I'll go to Ms. Porterfield, then I have a critical question, Mr. Mancini.
So, as I...
I didn't see your hand, Mr. Farley.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Farley, was your hand up?
Like, four times ago.
Four times or more.
Yes.
Four times ago. Sometimes I think, Mr. Mancini, I'm just going to move back and retire little voice here, but anyway, not really. I guess my first thing, yes, a task force, and we bring Once Schenectady to the table, if they're already so far ahead of us, but we're the legislative body for this city, and we need to protect renters, tenants, homeowners, every homeless people, everyone here in the city, that's our job. I guess the data that's been presented, wasn't presented, it was presented by one side of the issue for good cause, so I'd like to see more data, absolutely. I'd like to know, I'd like to bring homeownership into this whole situation, okay? Because, listening at the rail multiple times, to tenants, landlords, individuals, a lot of these tenants are paying money that could go towards a mortgage. We have a homes program that's on the table. In some of the research I did about good cause, Schenectady was like fourth on the list for their home, homes, ownership program. So we have that, we have, who builds our homes here, up here, Madeline Thorne's...
Habitat.
UCI, or Habitat, okay, we have a lot of that going on, we have a lot of great things going on here in the city. We also had a landlord registry data that SLIP was working on, and other individuals, okay? They had a monstrous meeting over at the border's edge. There was every agency there, whether it was DSS, so these things are all being done, so as, with the task force, they can continue to be done. And I want to know, why are we third in the state? I want data on the top evictions, why? I want to know why we're third in the state, because that's pretty damn bad, okay? I want to know why. I want, you know, I want the data on that, because is it, you know, being in both situations myself in my lifetime, renting and having an apartment for rent, it's, you know, it's, it's not good on either end. So I understand both sides, but again, I think a task force, whether you want to call it a task force or something, get together, invite Once Schenectady in, invite the county in, okay? I guess my last thing is, before it vanter's back and forth and back and forth, this is in government operations, it's Mr. Farley, Mr. Louver, and Ms. Porterfield. At this point, we should probably try to move it out of committee or take a vote on it, because, that would be my recommendation.
Well, I'd like to add some to the conversation before we move it to the vote, because as the conversation, as we, you know, go further down the road of the conversation, I'm hearing a lot about having stakeholders and agencies and organizations. So to me, we've already talked ourselves away from tenant representation, which is a concern. Because we're talking about, I understand that people do this every single day, it's their job, about, you know, making sure people have housing, et cetera, but we cannot leave up at people that are directly impacted. That is a voice that needs to be at the table. So we cannot already, as we're talking about, I'm hearing that, okay, we have the stakeholders, we have the nonprofits, et cetera, and so on. I'm not talking about what's in the legislation, I'm talking about the conversation. And so, I think we have to make sure we steer, steer away from that, and make sure. And in terms of inviting Once Schenectady in, why are we not joining Once Schenectady? If it's already doing the work? And why are we saying to this organization that's already this organized group of people from a respected, that's part of a respected foundation within our community, and have done a lot of work already? Why aren't we saying to them, we would like to be a part of this, and then come up with something? As opposed to, again, creating something that in my mind already exists, perhaps not to the level we'd like to see? Why aren't we doing that? We don't always have to be the creator of it, we can be a part of it. And then when it comes together, if it comes to the point where we need to move something, then we can have that organization, you know, presented to the city, having done that work. And I know, from being at the meetings and seeing who's there, that there are already people there on both sides that are already impacted. These individuals are not being, like, the stakeholders are there, also the tenants on the ground, experiencing this are there. Why are we doing extra? That, why aren't we just joining in? If we see something that's happening, why aren't we joining in? I'm, I'm just not clear on why we need to feel like this needs to be something above and beyond the work that's, in addition to, I should say, not above and beyond, but in addition to the work that's already being done, why are we not joining with a group that's already doing this work, as opposed to starting something new?
Yeah, more to say about it? No, listen, I'm okay with the conversation continuing, I think it's an important one, so I'm going to make sure that everyone is saying what they need to say.
Yeah, I guess, the reason that I said, what I said about the work that Once Schenectady is doing is that ultimately, it's still going to have to be us, that, I mean, they can come up with as many ideas as they want, as they want, but still, then they would probably have to come to the city council and say, hey, you know, we want to make sure that you guys pass this, or, you know, could you consider this option, or this idea, or this? So, you know, I mean, and again, I mean, four of us were, I couldn't make a lasting meeting, but four of us were at the first meeting. Great, but again, it's ultimately our responsibility, not theirs. Like, I mean, I read about the app that they were thinking about doing, I mean, it's sort of like, I was kind of like, well, you know, maybe the city should be thinking about doing the app. I mean, it's really us, do you know what I'm saying? So I think, I think that it's great that we work in tandem, or if the task, if this task force went through, you know, that we invite a representative from Once Schenectady to come and report on the kinds of things that they're thinking about and talking about. I think this would include tenant representation, as well as landlord representation, so to get that in first concern. That's it. That's all I want to say.
To the point, I'd like to counter where we're talking about, where SLIP says they want to come up with landlord registry, a certain process, that SLIP, within their organization, wants to do that, and they're not, we're not doing that on behalf of the city, they're coming up with that. So how is this different with Once Schenectady having representation, if, you know, I know that Mr. Toro always attends SLIP meetings, how is this different? That SLIP is already coming up with their process?
Certain things still have to come through to us, right?
100%.
And I think the mayor is already, we already have things in place within the city that, in terms of landlords, in terms of the residents, the rental types of things, and the other things that the mayor is trying to suggest, so, you know, I'm just saying, it's still us, it's still...
I'm not disputing that, but what I am saying is that organizations come to us all the time, about things they'd like to bring forward, things they'd like to see. And again, we're entertaining that SLIP come forward with their landlord registry, and all the things that they've been talking about for a while. all the things that they've been talking about for a while, since '22, I heard that about that. So it's something that they've been talking about and want to present to the city, and they've talked about working with the mayor on that. So, so how is it that this organization over here, we're saying, okay, we'll work through it like that, we won't take it on, we'll take your recommendations? And then when, over here, we're talking about ones connected, we're saying, we won't necessarily take your recommendations because they have to come to us first? Why aren't we just, why aren't we just joining with, as we're joining with SLIP, why aren't we joining with ones connected? The work is already started. They're already doing the work. We know that they have stakeholders and we know they have tenants. All of the things, all of the things that are already, that are in here that Mr. Mancini is saying. And I believe some of the data that was asked for in terms of what Mr. Turov said, is data that, again, already exists. And we could just make these things known to ones connected, hey, this is what we'd like to see. So I don't, I just don't see how we need to do it separate and apart, is what I'm thinking potentially.
I'm not on that subcommittee, so I think this is heading, so.
Mr. Mancini, so, again, landlord registry, great idea, I think, you know, in more lenient terms, maybe this wasn't what you were saying, especially, it seemed like what you were saying is that, that we should take it on because ultimately it's our responsibility. And I think the point that President Porter was highlighting is that we work with agencies all the time to bring forth legislation that we then decide on. So SLIP is one of those agencies. SLIP happens to be part of ones connected. So, again, so instead of reinventing the wheel, we can just, you know, instead of having them have to come to us, we can just go to them to hear like, you know, what's happening, and then add them in the conversation. That's like, again, if you think that a task force in addition to this is something that is good, that's great. So let me just ask you some pretty simple questions so that we can move on, because that seems to be what people like to have happen. But remember, guys, the decisions that we're making are extremely consequential. That's why they deserve this back and forth, this conversation, they are. These are for people's lives or at stake, literally. So we wanna make sure that we're having these conversations, and it's very intentional, and sometimes drawing our way, but I feel like it's worth it. So Mr. Mancini, are you saying that this is something that could happen in conjunction with good cause? Or are you saying that this has to be either or, or could this, based on the data that we have, not be a yes and?
I think given the place we're in now, this come before that would pass, the good cause would pass. My guess, and I don't, would be that would not, good cause would not pass. I think the work of this task force will bring it, yes, we need it, or clearly, we've come up with something better. That, that's what I would like us to get to. And, you know, the one thing about ones connected is, I think clearly this falls within our accountability and authority. And I would ask Mr. O'Brien, is there some language, if we were due to resolution, that gives us the authority to enact the recommendations, which would be distinct from other groups doing it, where we have the city council, mayor, this-
You know, if there's, looking at your housing, rental housing section, I mean, depending on what areas of the code need to be amended, you can always do that. If it's within our authority, some things take state legislation, but, you know, it depends on what the recommendations from any task force say, whether it's something that can be, has to be done legislatively, or, you know, through programs, or requires state-enabling legislation. So that's always the possibility. But the, you know, if I can just follow up, you know, the local law, number one, is still pending before you. I wanna make that clear, all right? I know it was introduced last week, it will be more than seven days on your table, it's on for final consideration next week. The local law, I mean, the resolution for a public hearing, that was the council's public hearing. That is not the mayor's public hearing. How does the mayor's public hearing come about? Only if the local law is passed, that would require four votes. So the fact that the public hearing resolution failed last week does not impact the fact that that local law, number one, is still before you next week for a vote, and if the sponsor wishes to continue, you know, on that, I don't, you know, I don't wanna speak on behalf of Mr. Farley, but right now, that's on for a vote for next week.
So, I would just, again, just raise the point before we move to a vote, I would just raise the point that housing task force is something that I think could be a valuable thing, but being that's in the, being presented in the context in place of good cause, housing task force doesn't prevent families from being wrongfully convicted, but I don't think that anyone in the council, I don't need to ask Mr. Mancini, but I don't think anybody else on the council thinks that that's not happening right now. And please let me know if I'm wrong, I guess that's a better question. Does anyone think that, that families are not being wrongfully evicted in this connected right now? Does anyone think that?
Well, do you have specific examples of somebody that's being wrongfully convicted? You know, these are generic things, if there's somebody in contact-
No, it's not generic, there are no-
I'll, we staff on about tonight, get them back, bring more people from the law department, I'll call the county, I'll put a call in the governor's office, a lot of this is rhetoric. You gotta give me specific examples of people that are being improperly, illegally, or somehow else treated improperly.
So, let me answer your question very directly. Yes, there are incidents, people, they came to the larger council meeting, they've been there, there hasn't been a council meeting, I think, in the last large council meetings, where no one hasn't got up and talked about the fact that they had people that were currently concerned based on threats that were being-
Concerned going through an eviction process.
Hold on, Mr. Mancini. So, then let me answer with this one then. The heart and spirit of good cause is to prevent that from happening. So when people come to their council and say that that has been their experience, I believe that. So when I say, okay, that's been your experience, good cause is to put something in place to prevent that from happening. And to your answer, yes, multiple people have come for us and said that they have been retaliatory, they've been out of their home. So yes. At this point, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is a motion for the creation of the task force, is that, was that the motion?
That's, that's-
Is that taken, Ms. Moonveren? Is it, I'm your member of the committee.
Yes, I'd like to move that, that we create a task force to invite these agencies to help us participate and bring ideas to the table.
Sam?
I'm not gonna second it, because I, again, feel like we should be trying to work with ones connected in their exist. I think this is, being separate and apart and creating a whole new entity is not the most time-effective way of doing this, if our real goal is to address this, but to join with the organization that's doing that already. And we know that it has to come to us in the long run, but why are we not working with a group that's already doing similarly as we're working with another, the landlord group who is bringing things forward and we're being very open to that? So, again, the work's being done, I think the better way to go is to join with a group that's doing it and not create our own separate entity, which will probably draw the same people. We're gonna be drawing on the same people to come to the table, so it's just one more group that they have to be a part of. So, based on the value, those are my evaluations, so I can't second it based on that.
Thank you, Joseph R. I obviously won't be second based on the fact that, again, this is legislation that is being presented instead of good cause is how it's crafted here in the legislation. Therefore, I can't support it because it doesn't offer any of the protection that good cause does. And as we've been talking to people that are coming to the rail and have been reaching out to us very clearly, this is a problem, and I can't support anything that's going to let another family be wrongfully evicted out of their house and uprooted to this place while we figure out data that we've, that's already been presented to us, that's already existed. And I don't think that, just based on the conversation, I don't know that the council has read through this legislation, I don't know that everyone has, I would just strongly suggest that you couldn't read through the legislation, because, again, nothing that was brought forward today as far as landlord protections, as far as evicting people based on breaking the standards property and not paying their rent, those are all permissible under good cause. So, but then I wouldn't be seconding that, so that motion fails, correct?
That's good. Okay. Before you close, I just wanna thank Mr. Mancini for trying to come up with a solution that, trying to present some sort of creative solution that would help us through this discussion about housing stability. So, thanks, I thought it was, I thought it was a good try.
And Mr. Mancini, I appreciate your ideas around this task force. Again, I just can't support it in place of good cause, because good cause protects people and keeps them in their house, and this doesn't do that.
Well, yeah, just the final comment, wasn't in place of, it was to gain support of. So, then- And we're not gonna get there, we're not gonna get the task force, but we gotta get information from other solutions that are possible, but not in place of, getting more information isn't necessary, I don't think we need, or know if it's necessary. Well, getting the data, but I don't know what we've done to resolve those, and I don't know that this law is gonna solve those problems.
I don't think it solves here, I don't think so. So, me and you on the same page, I don't think that good cause solves the whole problem. I think that it does offer protections for people who are wrongfully and illegally, and right now, not even, but wrongfully being convicted for like retaliatory convictions and based on their sexual orientation and doing all those things that people have seen to the rail, so, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, I just feel like you're-
We're gonna sit here, and we're gonna spin it right the way we're wrong, and we can just-
Hold on, this is my, hold on, this is my committee, sir, this is my committee, sir.
We keep spinning stuff.
See, but this is a problem.
My gosh.
See, but look, the way you're conducting yourself right now is what I just see as a problem. Just because you feel the conversation is going on long, you being disrespectful, I appreciate it.
No, it's not that way, I'm not a guy. You're allowing people, you're allowing people to express themselves, you're giving people for the whole evening.
But, sir, right now-
Everyone is entitled to their opinion, and you should respect that. You're not respecting our, the other members' opinion and suggestion.
Right now, you're acting out of order, sir, right now.
Because I have to call it out of order, you have to call it.
Excuse me, sir, gentlemen, Mr. Moonveren, Mr. Farley's saying that he did not call on you and recognized you to speak, that's what he's saying right now. And, Mr. Farley, if I can inter-, mayor, did you, I saw that your pen was up, did you, is there something you wanted to interject here?
Could the court just transmit around, I'd like copies of whatever the data is or the information that's part of the record of the council?
That is provided to us at the last council meeting.
Well, just narrative over the rail, it's not a formal presentation of stuff each individual council member, it's not subject to review. If you're voting on something, you should know what you're voting. You've asked for data on a lot of things, I've made data a big portion here, what data is before the council?
I can say that there was data that was presented at the council meeting, at the last council meeting, that, so, someone came forward, so we could, we, yeah, we do have that. And if you're asking about all of the data that's been requested here, it would, you know, take a few days, if you just wanna see what's been presented to the council, then there's that. But if you're asking for all the data that's outlined here, it would take a couple days, but I believe the data exists and can be compiled in-
And what's part of the record?
Okay, part of the record, that we have. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Manci-, Mr. Farley, it's-
So, I wanna, I wanna make sure I give Mr. Moonveren, I think I'm ready to speak, but I called on him, I must move around.
No, I'm good.
Oh, I'll set it down.
Okay. Take your free tea.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, as long as we're still going, you said being evicted for sexual preference and things like that, we don't have any data for that, that's not even on the table. I'm sorry, it's just-
Say that, that's all.
Really. I mean, the mayor asked, you know, who's coming forward, who's there? I mean, people are being evicted, obviously, for reasons that the court finds acceptable. But again, I wanna know why we're third in the state, but maybe Sam can get those numbers together for us. This, this here that we got over the rail, just handed over the rail, it could have been made up, we don't know, but, well.
I think they cited where the information came from, maybe, I don't think it was cited.
But just handed it over.
Well, can I just say that that happens to us often, we are often handed things across the rail, so, and we don't always necessarily question the authenticity of it or where it's sourced from, but this one did give the sources. So, I mean, I know, obviously, this is a very hot topic, even among council members, and a very passionate topic even among council members. So we've all had our say today, and lots of it. Clearly, this did not pass either committee. And I also wanna say, in terms of the cause, that we consistently talk about tenants and tenant protections, but it also protects landlords, and I think that we should not lose sight of that, because it gives them the ability to say, somebody's not paying your rent, you have to go, somebody's destroying your property, or all these, somebody's, you said, your lease says one person, and you moved in five people, they have to go. So there are protections for landlords and tenants in this legislation, in that good cause legislation. So, that's the last comment I have, Mr. Farley.
So, with that, I would say that, Mr. Mancini, I'm proud of saying this, I appreciate what you're, how you're presenting this task force. Again, I just can't support it due to it being instead of, so you and I, we're both at the last ones connected meeting, and that conversation's piled forward to work and continue to work.
Do you want this conversation? Yeah, we'll get it and figure it out.
Yeah, so, again, this isn't an argument, this is an over change of ideas that's important because it impacts people's livelihood and is urgent for people who are in this situation. Thank God, I'm sorry, I'm in a situation right now, I haven't set this table, that I know of. With that, I, any more issues to come before government operations? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we are adjourned.
All in favor? Aye.
Everyone seems to be in favor. I do, so, call the order of the flavors committee, we have two items on the agenda. They both seem to be in the executive area, so I will, the motion is going to executive session.
Motion. She got me all flustered.
No, I'll second it. Okay, right now, executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We, we got it.
We're in the public last week.
Yes, none of the public will have to leave.
Aye, aye, aye.
I'm going with her.